Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website, and for guest speakers joining us at the table, please do not turn off your microphones. Our first order of business is roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley. Ms. Kell Smith. Ms. Warwick. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger, Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council, and profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. And we do not have any registered speakers, so anyone who would like to speak can approach the podium, and you will have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's the high-rise at the top of Beffert. Now, on April the 22nd, on KDKA, I heard Cory O'Connor having an interview. Now, some of the things that he said, and I took it from this, he said that he tried to make an appointment with the mayor, but the mayor has a nonprofit organization, family something, and he could never get an appointment. Well, the same way with me. I live up in the K. Lee Weir Irving's high-rise, and when the mayor came up to the building and brought a proclamation and a plaque for Salud Dean's, a previous case, uh, councilman, brother, who had just moved into the city, came from California. He had came in, and he gave him a proclamation and a plaque for cleaning up in front of August Wilson's house, which is up on Beffert. When that happened, I was really upset. I'm saying, now, how did he even know about August? How did he even know about Salud Dean's brother? That's one of his cronies. So I went to the mayor, and I said, "Mayor, I don't want to foreshow or bring light on you without me explaining what it's about. I want to know why, how you knew about Salud Dean's brother." He got very offensive, and he said, "Well, what, you got a problem with it?" And I said, "Yes, I do." Because August Wilson told me to keep coming down and telling my story, otherwise it's history, your history. Okay? This mayor, I don't appreciate him, and I don't think that he is mayor material. And I've, I was saying something to, to the community, I'm saying, "Did you see how much did the mayor only got, like, $20,000 or $30,000 in his campaign? But Cory O'Connor got $300,000?" And I'm saying, "But he's Irish." And then I remember, oh, his mother was Jewish, so citizen. The Jewish have that O'Connor. O'Connor probably will be the mayor. Now, one thing I do must say about O'Connor, you gotta give credit where credit is due. He had much respect for us citizens in this place. He would be there at 10 o'clock, sitting and waiting. He would speak to me, even though his father didn't, and my councilmen don't. And he would say, "Ms. Brown, how are you today?" And I looked at him, and I said, "You know what, Cory? If your father knew that you were treating me the way you are," I said, "he would turn over in his grave." Because O'Connor did not like me, and I did not care for him, because he was not that good of a council, uh, president. Thank you, and just have a nice day.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Herbert Flaherty, Jr. Um, I've been living in this, uh, actually, I'm just a city resident. I'm homeless right now. I'm in and out of jail a lot, institutions, programs. Um, I notice a lot of things in the city, in the jail, and in all the programs, and things the city has to offer, which it ain't much. Um, you know, I noticed a lot, like, they'll push you to jail, or to this program, or to this program, to this program, to keep putting a Band-Aid on a problem. Um, I'm 36 years old. I was born in 89. Uh, city always wasn't the greatest growing up, you know what I mean? It was, it was a rough city. Most people didn't have an education. And, uh, we grew up living the streets. And, uh, as I got older, and I started to go to church, I found God. Um, I started going to jail, and I started looking like, there's no real reform, there's no real education, there's no real job placement or job training. They send people to the renewal center, to ACJ, or all these programs, and they don't teach anybody anything. Um, it would be cost-efficient and cheaper to teach criminals or people that are uneducated a trade, uh, just in anything, you know what I mean? In chemical engineering, and carpentry, and skills like that, a place where you could go, instead of being housed at 952 Second Avenue, or 339 Boulevard of the Allies. They could have a place like that, where they offer people an educational program the whole time they're there, like a DOC program with college tutors and, and stuff there, you know what I mean? To teach people a proper education, because the city has an entire asset of a workforce, you know what I mean? There's, there's, there's gotta be at least, I know maybe a million people without a job that are able to work, you know what I mean? That are able to learn something and get an education, and are probably willing to be taught if they could be housed in a place like a Job Corps. You know, most people don't see the light until they're 25, and it's too late to go to Job Corps. It's too late to do this, it's too late to that. And they get institutionalized, and they just keep going back to jail, rehab, the streets, renewal center, wherever. And if the city, uh, I wanna draw up a proposal for a lot of things, and if the city could, could give the youth, or even people of, that are older, an education, you know what I mean? And house them properly, and give them a chance to learn and succeed and thrive, maybe a new building or, or a college campus to teach adults how to, how to be productive members of society, you know what I mean? I think that'd be more cost-efficient than sending them to rehabs, jails, or being homeless, or all over the city time and time after time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Special Agent Sunshine. Oh, thank you, Lord, for bringing me here. I return to sender any voodoo, hexes, curses, anybody tries to send to me, death magic y'all been doing every day, daily. I return it to sender 100 million billion trillion googleplex. And whoever sending it, Lord, throw them into a lake of fire, in Jesus' name. I pray, amen. Dear God, thank you for equipping me to represent you in this world. Please give me the strength and wisdom to reflect you well, so that others are drawn to you. It's a lot, um, he has me doing out here, y'all. I'm literally going different places along with coming here, to find out where the money is going, and why there's so many homeless people out here on the street. And the assessment that I've come to a conclusion and made, over an almost two-year period, is this: grant funds from the 2023 National Sexual Assault Kit Initiative grant, in the amount not to exceed $37,000, to support overtime for PBP detectives for the investigation of old sexual assault cases. Really? How old are they? That's the million-dollar question. How old are these sexual assault cases that you need $30,000, $37,000 for? Because it's too many people out on the street, I'm not playing with y'all. We're gonna assess where this money is going, and when we do, God is the one that's gonna take action, and He's gonna force y'all to help these people on the street. Don't believe it, just watch. An increase from the 2025 capital budget, um, $63,333,030. To account for additional federal highway administration funding being received by the city of Pittsburgh. Really? It's the increase part that's getting my attention, and I hope is getting the attention of everybody else. These increases, what you guys are doing, is you're going on vacation with these increases of money, and it's just not gonna happen. I'm so sorry, that's coming to an end. Proverbs 21:13 says, "Those who shut their ears to the cries of the poor will be ignored in their own time of need." And I promise you, y'all get ready to come out here with us, and see what it's really like to be out on the street. You're not gonna like it. I promise you, you're not. And you're not gonna have the grace to handle it, when you lose everything and have to come out here with us. It's not gonna be pretty. An eager anticipation of the Lord's return keeps us living productively, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Any further speakers? Seeing none, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. Our first committee is the Finance and Law Committee. We have a few deferred papers. Bill 1667.
Bill 1667.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. I've had a request to read some of the bills together, and I just wanna have that in front of me. If we can read Bills 1667 and 1691 together, thank you.
Bill 1667, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Mohammed Bernie for tuition reimbursement for an amount not to exceed $33,292 over one year. And Bill number 1691, resolution transferring the amount of $33,292 within the 2025 operating budget from City Council District's salaries and wages, regular to City Council District's employee benefits for the purpose of tuition reimbursement.
Resolution to hold six weeks.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of a six-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Bill will be, bills will be held for six weeks. Bill 1675.
Resolution providing for the sale of certain property in the 23rd Ward, First Council District, City of Pittsburgh, acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at tax sale.
Resolution to hold one week.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of a one-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bill will be held for one week. New papers, Bill 1728.
Bill 1728, resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Fragoman, Delray, Burnson, and Lowey, LLP, in an amount not to exceed $40,000 over one year for professional services in connection with immigration matters.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1728, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1736.
Ordinance amending of Pittsburgh Code Title VI Conduct Article I: Regulated Rights and Actions, Chapter 626, Page Sick Days Act, Section 62603, accrual of sick time so as to change the rate at which employees can accumulate paid sick leave hours, and increase the maximum total amount of paid sick leave hours that can be accumulated.
Motion to approve? Discussion? Is, would anyone like to defer to the bill sponsor? I'll just say, it was my interpretation from the council president that he wished to hold this bill, but, um, I'm, I'm happy to move along and come back to this bill at the end of the meeting, or when he's available to, to handle this. But I'm happy to take discussion in the meantime.
Yep, Madam Chair, I just wanted to tell you, I spoke to, uh, our president yesterday on this, and, um, yeah, he informed me, and I wished also that we were gonna hold this for a public hearing. But if we have to go back to it, that's whatever you decide.
Sure. Any further discussion on the bill, um, in the meantime? Okay. Uh, we will, uh, resume discussion and take a final vote on the next steps on this bill, when the council president is able to join us again. Okay, that moves us on to invoices. Is there a motion on invoices?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Oh, second, yeah.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Invoices are approved. That moves us on to P-cards. Is there a motion on P-cards?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of P-cards, please indicate by saying aye.
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 P-cards are approved. That moves us to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilperson Warwick.
Bill 1713, deferred paper. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement and/or amendments with the University of Pittsburgh for the purpose of providing supplemental waste operations in the Oakland neighborhood at no cost to the city.
Uh, I have an amendment, so motion to amend.
Second.
Discussion?
I think, you have to motion to approve, before you motion to amend.
Oh, apologies, motion to approve?
Second.
And then motion to amend.
Motion to amend, we have a second.
Second, second.
Discussion on the proposed amendment?
I, I, if the director and supervisor are here, I'd like to call them up.
Thank you.
Sean Wackel, Superintendent Environmental Services.
Uh, thank you, sir, being here. Can we talk a little about what we're, we're looking at here?
Um, yeah, absolutely. So this is, um, to help fund a supplemental collection in Oakland, so we've been working with the University of Pittsburgh, um, and they have agreed to a maximum of 15 additional collections in Oakland, uh, to support, um, the cleanliness of the neighborhood. Um, so we've been working with the university to, um, you know, pick up additional trash. This was work that the university was trying to do themselves, um, but it created a lot of confusion, it wasn't necessarily effective, um, as we would have liked, um, so they have agreed to, um, fund this on a per-collection event basis, um, to cover the city's costs to do additional pickup in the neighborhood.
Okay. Uh, do we know when those 15 supplemental pickups will be, or is it just as needed?
Um, as needed. Truly, we see the biggest amount of trash when the students move back in, in the fall.
Sure.
So, trying to get everything in place. Uh, perhaps we will do one, um, shortly, when we have the smaller amount, but, um, definitely to be ready to go for when the kids move back in.
Cool. Um, are we doing anything? I, I know that there have been efforts to get dumpsters, uh, placed on the street during move-in, when the, you know, August 1st, when that, uh, move-in happens, that we've looked in the past at just staging dumpsters all throughout. Have we considered that again, or is that?
Um, my understanding, there was too much abuse with that program, that the intended purpose of it was not happening. Folks were coming in and filling the dumpsters before the, the residents could even use them.
Okay.
We've tried some different options since then, and this is where we're at now.
Okay. Um, well, I'm really glad to see this happen, I think this is, you know, really something that we've, we need to see more of. Um, you know, I also know that the university is paying, uh, you know, a good, good bit for this. This is not a, uh, small expense for the university. Uh, you know, that, when they were doing, gonna do this with a private contractor, it, it was a lot cheaper. So I'm, I'm glad to see that they're willing to, to pony up and, um, do this, you know, an extra 15 times, and, uh, I'm hoping that we see a lot of success out of this, and, uh, looking forward to it, to a cleaner Oakland, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, sir.
Councilwoman Kell Smith.
I just, uh, real briefly, I just wanted to mention that, I actually was, I apologize, it was late, I was actually meeting with Kevin Quigley about Redup stuff, and trying to understand a little bit about what they did differently. And one of the things we talked about is maybe putting some of the trash collections instead of the alleys in Sheridan, and you see that they're, I mean, they're constantly overflowed with trash, is maybe just moving the trash to the front again of the house, of the homes. So I didn't know if that was something we could look into and see, do some kind of, you know, observation or pilot program to see if it works better, or that there'd be less trash on those streets. Um, but Sheridan does their own, you know, trash program that they have, and they do an amazing job, but they shouldn't have to, they really shouldn't have to. But one of the things I keep getting requests for repeatedly is, um, additional trash cans on Grandview Avenue. And is that your decision, or whose decision would that be?
Um, you know, we, we have a protocol in place to evaluate those, um, that involves, you know, our own staff and environmental services, our Streets Division, um, we take input from Public Safety, um, you know, certainly something we're willing to look into, um, to see if additional street cans were warranted. Same thing with the dumpsters, though, um, the public street cans, if there are too many, they will get abused, they will just become illegal dumping sites, so we do need to be cautious on those.
But you know what's becoming an illegal dumping site? The street. The streets are not becoming illegal dumping sites. They're all over the place. I showed you those photos in Sheridan, you know, and I thank you for working on that with the police. I'm glad that something's, you know, happening, at least you're aware of it. And, um, and I'm hoping that it's resolved soon. But I just, in general, I mean, it's, I just feel like we need to, like, sit back and try to figure out what we could do differently, what did work, what didn't work. And I think that there's a lot that, that has worked in the past, and I think you're doing a lot of things. I love the timers, or the, you know, the, um, the sensors on the, on the trash cans, I love, I mean, if they're working. But what I see, yesterday, they did another cleanup of McGarville Roadway, which we're also waiting, waiting for McGarville Roadway to be completed, that's a project Domi's working on, and, um, I wanna thank them for that. But I feel like all projects in my district are held up until the election, or until, uh, until I'm out of office. But, uh, but it's unfair that the people are paying the price for that. And, and so they're paying the price with, you know, pools not opening, with playgrounds not getting done, with trails not being done, with trash all over the play, different things that I feel like, okay, they deserve to at least have some response. We all represent, we, you know, every, we represent all the people. And so it just felt like we need to do a little bit better in those areas, regardless of, and every administration's done it, I mean, so, I mean, every administration's had their projects they've held up or moved. But what I'm gonna say is that, for me, I would like to see more of an effort in terms of this, this area getting more attention. But, I mean, that Stadium Street over in Sheridan, and the things that are happening over there, and the illegal dumping, and I do wanna thank you, because you, you and Domi have been very responsive, that, I mean, truthfully, but it shouldn't get to that point. And it's my understanding, it's, you know, somebody who works for the city, it's their relative that's doing the dumping, and people know who it is, and they just keep, it just keeps happening. So I just wanna make sure that you're working on those issues, that are quality of life issues for all of Pittsburgh. I understand the importance of Oakland, I was born and raised there, I mean, still have a gazillion friends there and family. So I understand and appreciate, and I want them to have that attention, but I also wanna make sure that we're not forgetting about the other neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, morning, Chris. Hey, Sean.
How are you?
Good. Um, getting back to the Oakland thing, real quick, just out of curiosity, uh, so what was happening was the university was taking it upon themselves to pick up trash from students, is that right? Or bulk trash, or something like that? And then, then, then we decided to say, hey, wait, that confusion was going on, or whatnot, and we decided, we should do it, and they just pay us. Is that summing up?
Um, that, that's it, exactly. Last year, they started working with a vendor they already had to do some.
Okay, so they're hiring somebody private to pick up, but it was, again, uniformly just doesn't fit into.
And it wasn't nearly as effective as we believe our program would be.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we were still seeing the same issues on the street, um, that anybody in the public right of way would encounter, you know, large piles of recycling and waste during move-in periods, blocking sidewalks, that sort of thing. Um, you know, it just wasn't being as effective as I think we all would have hoped.
Do you know if, if they are paying us as much as they were paying the private vendor, or how?
I'm not privy to the amount, I'm not privy to the amounts that they were paying the private vendor.
Yeah, right. The councilman Sharland said, you know, pretty much it's worth our while, uh, whatever they're paying us, it's not, they're paying for our labor, I guess? How do you calculate what they pay, just like we do in Wilkinsburg? Do we pick up Wilkinsburg?
Yes, yeah. Uh, so again, this is to cover the city's cost, uh, cover the cost that we would already be doing if we weren't part of it.
Right, right. Okay. Um, okay, now, shifting to, uh, issue that, I don't know if you would even consider something like this, but like Councilwoman Kell Smith said, I'm always about garbage cans. Um, I'd love to have them every corner, honestly, I would. I, I think people use them if you put them out, but if there's a law, then throw it on the ground. It's unfortunate, but it's kinda the way that it is. So, you know, I've been taken upon myself to pick up, clean up, you know, getting volunteers to clean up sides of roads and things of that nature. But most specifically, it was the entrance to Liberty Tubes, okay? And you know what a mess that was, it was just horrible. Got it all cleaned up. Um, I developed a rapport with the people, kinda hang out there, um, so, you know, they know what I expect out of them. They're asking for a garbage can, right? Because they're putting their, now, I don't weigh in on whether it's right or not for them to be there panhandling. That's, if we're gonna allow it as a city, that's fine by me, I just don't want syringes there, and I don't want them leaving their garbage behind. And I've told them that. Um, and they've said, and they've started, actually, to put their, you know, trash in one spot for me, at least, but, you know, they drink, they beverages, they eat, people give them food, there's garbage that accumulates. So, um, as crazy as it sounds, can we get them a garbage can underneath the Liberty Tubes?
Certainly, you'll talk to our staff to see what we can do about that.
Yeah, because, because I think that would help as far as my eye goes, when I see a loaf of bread, or, you know, something laying on the ground there, unsanitary, you know, I'm just like, oh, God. So, um, you know, and then, if we're gonna, again, if we're gonna allow them to be there every morning, afternoon, and do what they do, um, I'm not, I don't object to that. I object, I don't want the garbage there, I don't want needle, hypodermic needles there. If that's the case, I want them out, you know, so, so if, if you would entertain that, I think that would.
No, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, appreciate that, thanks. That's it, from me, Madam Chair.
Thank you, councilmen. Are there any further questions? If not, I have a couple myself. Anyone online? Okay. Um, thank you. But first, I wanna thank you for arranging this arrangement. Um, it's great, and it's much needed, and although I don't see, um, the exact same volume of, um, these kinda move-out issues right around, um, the part of Oakland that I represent as much as Councilperson Sharland, it's definitely noticeable, we know it's been an issue, we talk with Pitt about it every year. OPDC and Pitt have tried, you know, numerous different strategies, and so I'm glad this is happening. And I also wanna thank you, Director, for making the time, taking the time to call each of the council members in Oakland to give us a heads-up about this, and allow us to ask our own questions about this. So I don't think I have too many questions, um, only to say that I think what we discussed was, looking at this to see if we can learn, uh, something, whether we can apply it to other neighborhoods. I mean, of course, I'm sure that, um, you know, if Duquesne could arrange for something similar on the south side, where a lot of their college students live off-campus, if Carnegie Mellon could, you know, chip in for the same sort of treatment on Beeler and Wilkins and throughout Squirrel Hill, it would, you know, and I'm sure there are other examples of this, certainly, then just in Shady Side, which I'm sure is just like a lot of other neighborhoods, lots of renters, people moving out, um, every single June 30th becomes just a really big trash day, you know, who can we, who can we work with to help defray some of those costs for a special pickup? So, all great. My question is, um, the amendment moves from like a discreet number of 15 occasions, 3,000 per event, to actual costs incurred. What was the reason for that change? And, and I know we said, it'll be costs incurred, we don't really know until we do it, but do we have a rough estimate of what that'll be? Is it still gonna be roughly 3,000 per pickup, or total, or you think more?
Yes, it will roughly be no less than. Um, I think there's some additional costs with recycling and landfill that don't get incurred until, um, you know, after we get invoiced by Recycle Source, um, and so those costs fluctuate based on the market. based on the market. But certainly, all the costs of our labor, the cost of our equipment, you know, same with the landfill, we're in the process of renegotiating a landfill contract, so we, you know, we anticipate those costs, which is the other reason for the amendment, because we realize that like, hey, you know, there's, you know, there's a good potential for us to have an increased cost if we haven't captured there, so we just want to have the flexibility to work with the university to, to realize those.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Second round, Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Just briefly, I do want to thank you, Supervisor, for all the work that you do, and Director, for all the work you do across Pittsburgh. Your institutional knowledge really means a lot, and, and I know that when I send you stuff and how you address it, and how you handle it, and the responses you give, so I just want to thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Councilperson, Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I usually complain, but I'm not, you know, honestly, I, I want to also back up Councilwoman Kail Smith, yeah, the job you do, Sean, honestly, is phenomenal. I get very, very few phone calls, complaints on refuse, you know, and, you know, and you've been really great about sending Public Works by when we do these cleanups, and, you know, they've come in and hold it out, so, so I really do appreciate all the work you do, so thanks.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilperson Warwick.
Since we're talking about it, what, what is the, what's the lifespan of these city, of the city blue bins that we give out?
Oh, yes.
I mean, roughly.
We really haven't got there yet.
Okay.
Certainly, we, we've just finally got them all to our residents, we, we do have warranty on them, so if, if there are things that break, things like that, we can get replaced. You know, you're typically, you know, five, 10 years, maybe. It, it just depends on the condition of use, I guess.
Okay. I just, next time we do, like, next time it comes around, the, I think the clamps, I just watched one of your crews, even throwing it in the truck, it looks easier, because it's like they don't have to take it off and whatever, they just, and it, you know, it closed, and then they just.
It'd be great to give those to residents for both the regular trash and for the recycle.
Do we give regular trash?
Yeah, we should do it.
No.
Once we get money.
Well, that's the key.
I won't be here for that, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But the lids kind of warp a little bit.
Yeah.
Anyway.
At, at the time, that was the best option.
Sure, sure, sure.
You can always look to improve.
Yeah. Anyway, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, so we have a proposed amendment on the table. All those in favor of amending Bill 1713 with the amendment for us, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Amendment is approved. All those in favor of Bill 1713 as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
New papers, Bill 1729.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an ownership and maintenance agreement with Almino LP for six bus shelters to be constructed along Second Avenue and Blair Street in the Hazelwood neighborhood at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1729, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross.
Supplemental new papers, Bill 1746. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement, agreement and/or amendments with Liv Barn and/or with Team Pittsburgh Ball Hockey for the purpose of Team Pittsburgh live streaming deck hockey games held at the Deck Hockey Rink in Marmaduke Park at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve?
Second. Discussion.
Discussion. Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, I want to, I want to thank the chair for allowing us to go forward. They have a, a deck hockey tournament coming up this summer, and this, this live streaming option will be available, so parents off-site can, can watch it, or I believe it's, you know, something where you can, you can watch remotely. So, but I also just want to mention, you know, I want to thank DBW for getting this together, this agreement together, and every, all the other work that DBW does to make sure that Marmaduke Park is, is all well and good. And then also, thanks to the Team Pittsburgh Deck Hockey Group, because it's, it's probably the most vibrant area in Brighton Heights. They have a concession stand open for the whole community, and, you know, really brings a lot of people out in the neighborhood, so, thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Kail Smith.
I just want to say to Councilman Wilson that my grandkids play over that way, and I sometimes go to the fields to watch them play, and they look at me like I'm a stranger in his territory, and I shouldn't be there. So I just want to say you're well-respected over there, so thank you.
Well, thanks. Now, now you can watch the games, or you can watch your, your, your grandkids from, from the, from the live stream.
That, that sounds perfect to me.
All those in favor of Bill 1746, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to our final committee of the day, Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Mosley.
Bill 1727, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interests, if any, and into the publicly-owned property in the 30th Ward, City of Pittsburgh, designated in a deed registry office of Allegheny County, as Block 33K, Lot 128, 219 Reefer Street, Council District 3, at no cost to the city.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve? Second.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1727, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us back up to Bill 1736. We have a motion to approve in a second. I have been communicating with Council President Lavelle, who I believe was having some trouble connecting. Council President, if you are able to speak up, please do, but the intention of the president was to hold Bill 1736 for a public hearing. Can we get a motion?
Sum it.
Yes, sir.
Second. So we have a motion and a second, to hold Bill 1736 for public hearing. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill will be held for public hearing. Thank you very much. That, that exhausts our committee, standing committee's agenda. Meeting announcements this afternoon at 2:00 PM, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 1579 regarding reduced, reduction in required minimum lot sizes. Speaker registration will close at 12:30 PM today, and next week, council will hold a regular meeting on Tuesday, April 29th, and standing committee's meeting on Wednesday, April 30th, both at 10:00 AM. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Is there anything from members? Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know if we yesterday gave a moment of silence for the Pope, his passing, and I, I don't know if we even recognized it yesterday, because I came in late, so I apologize. But I would like to do that today if we, if we had it. But I would also like to mention that he really did a lot to bring new people to the table, to bring new people to the church, and to me, I know a lot of people disagree with, you know, some of his style and some of the things he's done, but I think in the end, that's really what we should be doing, is bringing people to the church, and whatever happens beyond that is not, that's between them and God, not everybody else. And so I think that he, he was bold enough to do, lead differently, and, and made some changes where he brought a lot of people to the, to the church, which was really going through a struggling time, and really having a lot of controversial issues happening, including he led through some really difficult times, including the child abuse scandals and all those things. So I do want to acknowledge his passing and say that I'm grateful for the service that he, he provided. As I, I even struggle with my own, my own faith, my own religion, like a lot of people do. I just want to say that I think he was one of those people that kind of brought us closer to, to the idea, and so I just want to thank him for his, his leadership, and give a moment of silence.